Call this work session open. Just a couple of things as far as the process today. Initially Commissioner Ba would like to make a few opening introductory comments and then at that, after she finishes, we will then turn it over to the gentleman from DEP. And they have a slide show that comprises about 40 slides. And I'd like to have them go through all 40 slides and once they finish that, we will then open it up for questions from everybody to them so that rather than stop them on different slides, you know, I'd rather see, let's see the whole presentation and their whole story, if you will, on Piney Point. So with that being said, Vanessa, floor is yours.
Thank you Chairman. The reason that we're here.
Oh yeah baby.
I can't turn it off baby, sorry. The reason that we're here today is because back in, I think it was in December, long story short, I'd gotten word that there was 750,000 tons of fly ash coming into the port for HRK. So my question was, that's interesting, why? So I was told that there was a process that HRK was hoping to be able to accomplish to take care of the water at Piney Point, which as we all know on this board, that's our number two priority, or I don't guess it's fair to say number two, I mean it's one of our top priorities this year for the legislative delegation. So I contacted Dave Sanford here at the port and asked him if he could schedule a tour for me at Piney at HRK, because I'd never been there and taken the tour. And I know that a couple of our new, both of our new commissioners went on that tour. So the day that I went on the tour, I also went with Representative Will Robinson, Charlie Hunsacker from the county was there, as well as Rob Brown. And we had a great tour. Jeff at HRK was great, answered all questions, got a full understanding of what was going on there, what had transpired there. But the one thing that did bother me that I wanted to bring to this board, and I couldn't do it without having some sort of meeting, was Jeff at HRK was very clear to us in that meeting that HRK was trying to get permitting from DEP for a deep water injection well. And I cringed because as far as I knew, the county didn't know anything about that. So we had conversation on that and Jeff and I agreed that we had the utmost respect for each other, but we agreed that we disagree on how to handle the problem there. But that's, as you all know and understand, that's only me. I can only speak for myself. So I went back and I tried to call Ed Hunsacker, the administrator at the county. Could not get him initially, so I spoke with Dan Slant. And Dan said he didn't know anything about that. And I said, well, the Board of County Commissioners need to know what might be transpiring. At which time, it wasn't long thereafter when Ed called me. And Ed agreed that we needed to have a workshop here at the port. So at that time, I started trying to put it together. And you all know what transpired from that and that I was abiding by the county on how they wanted to handle it. The main thing for me was, I didn't really care where it was, as long as this board was together. And we discussed it with DEP and I did call DEP and had a great conversation. They were willing to come and have a workshop to talk to us about the options. I can tell you that he called me last night as well. And the presentation you're going to get today is basically what the options are. They're not going to recommend one to you today. But that being said, we need to be aware and educated. So I just wanted to mention that. I know that there was some discussion with this board in our, not our last meeting, the meeting before. Anything that perhaps you want to question or anything, I mean you can call Representative Robinson. I did talk to him after our meeting and he said he was going to try and make it today, but I don't think he could. So that being said, that's why we're here today.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, I need to find a mic. Thank you Vanessa. Mr. Coats, the floor is yours. Thank you for coming down from Tallahassee.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to try first and see if folks can hear me without the aid of a mic.
We need it for recording.
Need it for recording, sir.
Sorry.
And please everyone by yourself. Thank you for the record.
Okay, is this working and on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much Commissioner Ba, thank you very much Commissioners. The Department greatly appreciates your leadership as individual commissioners, whether you're sitting as the Manatee County Port Authority or as the Board of County Commissioners. We really appreciate you all taking the time to get together and reaching out to the Department and asking us to try to provide you with information this morning. It's important, you know, the Piney Point site has been a priority of the Department for many years since the Mulberry Corporation went into bankruptcy proceedings in 2001. And our mission always has been to make sure that we're protecting water resources of the state. So hopefully, I want to go through, and I think as Mr. Chairman was kind enough to point out, we have a number of slides. Hopefully these slides will be helpful for the Commissioners and for the public to sort of see what has transpired at the site. I really think that sets the stage for engagement about what opportunities are there in the future to make sure that the site is being held accountable, is maintained, and is not a concern for Manatee County or any part of the state. And so with that, we'd like to go through, so the Piney Point site has indeed a lot of useful history.
Mm-hmm.
What I'd like to do is to talk a little bit about the history of the site and bring it up to the 2001 timeframe when the Mulberry Corporation went into bankruptcy. The actions that the Department oversaw through different mechanisms to make sure that the site was closed and was not a threat to water resources in the area. Want to talk about, in particular, about the process water management, both during the closure operations that are now in the history books, as well as the current status of the site. Want to touch on the Berth 12 construction project here at the port and the relationship with the site, because that's an important piece of the site today that does need to be addressed. And I want to talk about the considerations, as Commissioner Ba mentioned. HRK has approached the project, their preliminary discussions, and they have approached the Department with a proposal that they believe will allow them to complete a capping of a portion of the site. So this is not the Gipstack closures. We want to talk about that and sort of try to differentiate the different parts of the site and what are ultimately today HRK's responsibilities. So I want to take a minute and first just talk about where we are, of course, we are here.
Doesn't want to work.
Yeah, let's see. Okay, there we go. So we are here, of course, in the Land Management and Land Management Center at Port Manatee. The former Piney Point site is here across the street, US 41, in this area, CSX Railroad Facilities. This site was approximately 670 acres originally. Portions of the site have been redeveloped and are in use today. This is the footprint of the phosphogypsum stack system that has been the interest of the closure and which contains processed water today. There are former cooling pond areas and other items that went through closure. This site and its permitted outfalls that would discharge any stormwater from the site, drain along, for the majority of the outfalls, drain along Buckeye Road and down into, and the historical treated water discharges would lead them to a freshwater drainage system and into the Bishop Harbor, Bishop Harbor area here, which is part of the Terracotta State Preserve. So this water resources here, and of course in Tampa Bay, are vital to protect. And again, that's really been the Department's mission throughout our interaction with this former phosphate facility. So the Piney Point site and indeed Port Manatee both have their origins around 1965. It is important to recognize that at that time, there was the interest in developing port facilities, interest in being able to handle phosphate-related materials through this port. And the Borden Chemical Company was the first owner, purchased that property across the street and began its efforts and in 1966, set up its operations as a phosphate fertilizer production facility. So the port and Piney Point have a common origin. So it's very appropriate that we meet here today. And again, I can't highlight enough the leadership and my appreciation for the Board of County Commissioners to take an interest and want to look and engage and see what opportunities there are to make sure that they were good outcomes and good solutions for the challenges that still remain at the site. So again, 1965, Piney Point facility had its origins. Manatee County welcomed Borden to the area and the port was just beginning. Indeed, today, Port Manatee is greatly diversified, providing commerce and supporting jobs, resources, and protecting water quality in this area. The site went through several changes in ownership and today, you know, the circumstances we are talking about really stemmed largely from the Mulberry Corporation bankruptcy in 2001. The Department did not acquire the site. The site was in bankruptcy, so it was under the control of a bankruptcy trustee, court-appointed trustee. And the Department sought, and a court-appointed receiver was separately put in place to oversee work at the site. And that court-appointed receiver was initially funded by appropriations from the legislature to facilitate the closure of the site, the removal and the safe treatment and disposal of processed water from the site so that that site could be closed and no longer be a concern. At the time, there were about 1.2 billion gallons of processed water stored in ponds and within the stack itself. And throughout the discussion, and I think it's important, the potential for rainfall at a site like this is always of concern. And indeed, I want to take you through and just remind everybody how critical rainfall was even in the closure operations at that time. And I'll go through a series of slides here, but it's important to just do a little bit of orientation. Port Manatee and Tampa Bay in the background from this view, looking from the east to the west. This is the footprint that you see in the aerial of the today primarily closed stack system. These compartments are important in the understanding of the site today. This is the old Gipstack, OGS compartments. These two are called the new Gipstack. It was an expansion of this facility. The NGS North, NGS South compartments. This is a former cooling pond and so is this little place here. This is about 28 acres here to give you some scale. Processed water in 2002, after the bankruptcy of Mulberry Corporation, was stored everywhere at the site. Around this site, and I think this is, hopefully will be some helpful understanding, this is essentially a 70 to 80 foot tall bucket of water. Around the site, as the site was operated, they had ditches, literally ditches that intercepted water that would tend to flow out. And if it didn't do that, then you would have groundwater contamination off-site from this facility. So the seepage collection dishes play an important role in the closure and also in the current conditions at the site. So again, a facility, this facility was essentially surrounded by seepage collection dishes. Ditches were intended to be operated to ensure that the processed water that's at the site stays within the system. So I want to take just a minute, just quickly flip through 2002. The trick in closing these facilities is to be able to safely and effectively consume or remove the processed water, to be able to get the equipment in, to do shaping, grading, to provide a cap to the stack system so that additional rainwater does not contribute to the processed water inventory over time. Because these facilities are large, you know, an inch of rainfall can be millions of gallons of additional water that has to be managed at the site. 2002, the water removal process was well underway. This area here, the NGS North, which was the first compartment to undergo closure operations, was being dewatered and at the end of December, heavy rainfall event essentially stops the closure operations. And another 200 million gallons were added to the inventory by January of 2003 because of rainfall. And at this time, the site could only hold two and a half inches of additional rainfall. And that is an important consideration because if you think of how you look at, you know, you've got to have the ability to store water safely at the site, be able to manage rainfall. And two and a half inches was what the site could handle before there'd be a concern with overtopping. Fortunately, through a lot of efforts and a lot of public engagement, much like what I hope we're doing here today with the Agency on Bay Management, Tampa Bay Estuary Program representatives, the public with Manatee County, and the Department engaged on a number of efforts to remove processed water. Our contractors removed processed water. At this time, they were working directly for the court-appointed receiver that the Department was funding through legislative appropriations. And they continued closure work at this point in time, 2004. The NGS North closure has been completed. This area was later slated to hold the water at the site while construction activities were being done. Here you see the OGS compartments being dewatered and about to undergo lining. By September of 2004, everyone remembers the 2004, 2005 storm seasons, hurricane seasons, these OGS compartments were lined and completed just before Hurricane Ivan passed by this area in the Gulf of Mexico. So people worked hard. At this time, there are three compartments closed. The large, approximately 70 acre, NGS North, I'm sorry, NGS South is the one remaining compartment at the end of 2004 that has to undergo operations. Extensive dewatering operations in that very large, old settling compartment from the phosphate operations. This gives you an idea of the scale of the reservoir that was constructed atop in the footprint of the NGS South, New Gypsum Stack South compartment. Ultimately, once those top areas were completed, there's about 1.3 billion gallons of reservoir storage at the site. But these top areas where those liners are located are closed. Rainfall that hits those liners should not be able to penetrate and get into the stack system. And so these areas are closed and the attention of the work at the site went to these little cap areas, a place here called the relief ditch, and the drains around the site. Again, it's important to understand, I want to take a minute, this is just a representation of the Gipstack system, the seepage collection ditch location at the toe of the Gipstack. So this ditch area here would surround essentially, functionally surround anywhere that's containing processed water. And the ditch previously during the site's operations were used to intercept any seepage that would tend to flow out laterally. The drains that were buried here are intended to do the same function to intercept any seepage and drainage of the pore water that is inside this stack. Again, these stacks are 70 to 80 feet above grade, contain processed water. The ponds atop contain processed water. Put a liner on top, whether it's a reservoir or a relatively flat area, keeps rainwater infiltration from getting back into the system, creating additional processed water. The ditches here that are converted into seepage collection drains serve a long-term function to collect and intercept drainage out of this stack over decades and route this water so it can be safely managed and treated. It is this drainage that contributes to the inventory today, above rainfall. So this, at this time, by 2006, in the fall of 2006, an important time at the Piney Point site, closure has progressed well. There, you begin to see the grassing of the side slopes. There are lined stormwater ditches that are sitting atop the drains around the stacks, so beneath this liner are drains. And these areas will eventually receive soil cover and they manage, once this is closed, the freshwater runoff around the stack system. Additional facility infrastructure is completed in 2006. This is a lined 10 acre sump. So this is still a large for the size of the site, maybe, maybe not relatively large, but 10 acres is a large area. And this sump collects all the drainage from that stack system, comes together in a system of pipes to a lift station essentially located here, and the water is transferred and pumped into there to be able to manage the seepage. And again, that's the source of the processed water that continues to come out from the stack system itself. One of the functions of the closure work and the approach that was taken was to be able to provide storage capacity for processed water or whatever else is needed at the site or used at the site. And at this time, in terms of the amount of rainfall the site could handle, by 2007, the site could handle over 90 inches of rainfall and not have any concerns about a release of processed water from the site. So a lot of storage capacity, and that's always been an important consideration in our mission to protect water resources. So I wanted to talk about what was done, and it helps us understand what was done. And today, there are additional treatment options, additional processed water removal, things that can be done. But historically, about 75%, roughly three quarters of the processed water that was removed at the site was treated and discharged with a combination of double lime treatment and reverse osmosis treatment at the site. The total amount of water that was removed as of March of 2007 was 2.35 billion gallons of processed water. So the site had, in fact, 1.2 was the initial inventory projection in the 2001 timeframe. By the time we reached 2007, 2.35, so that accounts for all the drainage of processed water out of the site plus rainfall that has landed at the site. So clearly rainfall is an important consideration, and I think it's why we're gathered here today and why it is important to be proactive in these discussions. There are a number of additional options that were used, including trucking some of this processed water to other industrial facilities. The reverse osmosis, we'll talk about in a few minutes. Because so much water was treated and discharged at the site, it was important to make sure that Bishop Harbor was being protected, that Department and all those that we engaged with had a very tricky challenge. We had to balance the need to remove safely processed water from the site so that closure could be conducted, because if the site is not closed, if it was not closed, it would continue to generate more rainfall and more processed water at the site. So you had to be able to treat and discharge. And indeed, it was important to continue to ratchet down over time. And this graph essentially shows the loading of nitrogen, a form of nitrogen, over time, and the Department incrementally ratcheting down in discussions and engagement with members to make sure that ultimately, the operations that were necessary at the site were not impacting Bishop Harbor. The fall of 2006 was another important timeframe in the history of the site. HRK Holdings acquired the site directly from the bankrupt Mulberry Corporation. They acquired it, you know, from the bankruptcy trustee in August of 2006. HRK, as the new owner of the site, approached the Department and the Department entered into a order, an administrative agreement with HRK. It required us to coordinate with HRK. They are, after all, the owner of that property. It would hold HRK accountable as the owner for the long-term care of that facility. The Department would continue closure operations contingent upon legislative appropriations to continue and finish that work that we had started because of the Mulberry Corporation bankruptcy. Again, it's important that the Department and the new owner be able to coordinate activities and indeed, HRK commenced other items that were not environmental priorities for the Department at that time. Our mission was to make sure that the Gipstack was properly closed and that water resources protected by removing and treating processed water from the site. HRK set about the redevelopment activities, including demolition of the phosphoric acid, sulfuric acid, and other facilities at the site, coordinated with the Department and its contractors to provide for safe disposal of some of those materials as part of the closure operations at the site. One of the most fundamental and important considerations of that agreement was it reinforced the Department's rules that any future uses, whatever they may be, of this stack system be something that's compatible with the closure and the investment there to make sure that this system is closed and no longer a threat to generate new processed water and protect the infrastructure that's there. And in doing that, protect the water resources. After HRK acquired the site, they and Port Manatee entered into a dredge materials containment agreement to make use. HRK is now the owner of that site. The Department is trying to complete closure activities at the site. HRK and the port entered into an agreement that would have allowed for dredge materials to be disposed of and stored in the reservoirs at the Piney Point site. In January 2011, HRK assumed the remainder of the operations. In January 2011, the Department's contractors left the site. HRK, through a series of additional modifications and agreement, assumed responsibility for all the remaining processed water at the site and what is but for the areas that have processed water, essentially a closed stack system. At that time, about total of about two and a half billion gallons of processed water had been safely and effectively removed from the site. There are 1.3 billion gallons of lined storage in the facilities. However, the NGS North at that time is the one area that contains processed water. Since 2005, that site has been used to provide for spray evaporation to help remove and eliminate processed water at the site. That system is still in operation today. So in 2019, early 2019, that system has been in operation almost continuously since May of 2005. The Berth 12 construction project, of course, was an important milestone for Port Manatee in this area, is located, the docking facilities for Berth 12. And the goal was to be able to safely complete a dredging project, a construction project for the expansion of the port, and then remove this material. Pipelines were installed from the port to the OGS compartments here. And the goal was to move up to one and a half million cubic yards of dredge materials from the Berth 12 area, safely dispose of that material here. The NGS South, remember, these three compartments are clean. They are closed, they contain rainwater. Processed water is managed here. There are still, there's the sump here. So these three compartments were involved in the Berth 12 construction project. The materials were pumped into these two compartments, the dredge materials. This compartment was to be used as a clarification reservoir. The port and the Department, everybody wanted to make sure that the water was clarified before it was brought back and the dredge water was returned back to Manatee Harbor at Port Manatee. Dredging operations commenced on April 22 of 2011. This is some of the initial material coming in from the dredging operations for the construction of Berth 12. And HRK is responsible for operating and monitoring the dredge disposal site under authorizations that we'll talk about from the Department. This shows some of the continuing operations here. Again, this is, so this is April 26, a few days into the operation. And these are some of the initial dredge materials that have come from the Berth 12 footprint at the port that are being placed into the two OGS compartments at the site. Again, those closed reservoirs. On May 11, On May 11, HRK notified the Department and let us know that they were seeing an increase in flow in those buried seepage collection drains around the stack system and an increase in chlorides and conductivity consistent with seawater introduction into the drain systems. Through a series of follow-up items in here, the Department ended up issuing an immediate final order to make sure that if there was gonna be, if there was concern at the site, that it be appropriately handled and managed. And ultimately, those drains had become pressurized, and in early June, HRK cut a piece of the site, and I'll show you where this is on the aerial, so that water from, this is essentially primarily seawater that had been introduced into this drain system, so that that material could be managed on-site and not have a release off-site. The Department had an immediate emergency final order that was issued on May 29 after the leak was discovered as conditions developed again June 7. Dredging operations by this time had stopped. The breach that was done here in this stormwater ditch allowed the pressure to be relieved so that this water would flow on-site and could be managed by HRK in basins on-site. There were emergency off-site discharges, but that was done to avert a potential concern with this material releasing to the south across Buckeye Road. The emergency discharge was done for approximately 20 days. The Department, of course, again, our mission is to make sure that whatever happens at this site or any site in the state is protecting water resources. The monitoring here was done, these are monitoring stations that were done in Bishop Harbor, and approximately 170 million gallons of seawater had essentially passed through a breach in the clarification pond. And everything that could be contained on-site was contained on-site. The seawater here, a lot of the seawater at the site was introduced into the process water system, so it increased the inventory significantly in the process water system. The Department certainly provided information, held a number of media events, and provided information, again, to those public stakeholders that we know are important and care about water quality, not just in Bishop Harbor but in the, in the greater Tampa Bay area. Because this is a phosphate processing facility, you know, nitrogen loading was, of course, a concern, and the emergency discharge did contribute about 3.5 tons of nitrogen loading, and in perspective, it's important to note that that's a little less than 1.7% of the annual allocation for nitrogen in this portion of Tampa Bay. Berth 12 was not completed. HRK worked, sought changes to their plans at the site to address the unexpected concern with the dredging operation at the site, and it's important to note, the dredging operation was, was fine as far as the site was concerned. The problem was this reservoir developed a leak in this vicinity which pressurized the drains. So that area obviously had to be repaired, the reservoir had to be inspected to make sure that there would not be any future concerns, and HRK's proposal ultimately to the Department was accepted with their engineers' qualifications and how they would make sure that if they put this and resumed dredging, that it could be done safely. Based on those assurances and the repairs that were done, dredging was able to resume in July of 2011. Berth 12 project was completed. You can see here, this is a little bit older April, 2010 aerial, and here you can see by April of 2012, this area is Berth 12 as we know it today, that dredging was completed, and those materials sit today in the OGS compartments at the former Piney Point Site. Clearly, there was a lot of work that had to be done by HRK. They did a lot of cleaning of return water ditches and the ditches that are outside the site because it was turbidity involved in the discharges off-site. They also had to do about $2.5 to $3 million of repairs that HRK funded at the site following the dredging project. So today, at the site, it's important to understand that there's some differences. Process water today at the site, this aerial is from March of 2018, but today, this is the NGS North where the spray evaporation system continues to function. This is the NGS South. That facility was repaired, was used to clarify seawater so the dredging project could be successfully and safely completed. This area today also contains process water. Process water is also managed in the sump. Again, this is the place that receives the stacked drainage. This compartment here, the OGS compartments, is the location where the dredge materials are currently maintained and stored at the former Piney Point Facility today. HRK and the port work collectively. This water is essentially salty seawater. The water that's there is safe to be decanted and discharged back through the port's facilities because through the pipelines that were installed, that's an access back to a marine location, so a seawater location. So the, essentially, the seawater that remains in this compartment and rainfall that hits these materials are safe to be decanted back to the port, and that is what's required. The discharges here are freshwater discharges, and the seawater cannot be discharged through the outfalls at the site. So the port and HRK work cooperatively that whenever these facilities need to be drained, this water is returned back to Port Manatee and into Manatee Harbor. So why, why is the timing important? Why is it so critical that the forum that you all have provided today, you know, happened? So this discussion is really about the remaining process water at the site to some degree. It's also about a separate discussion on the OGS compartments and what needs to happen there. So the larger issue really is the site. The site still contains process water. That water today is not being treated and discharged. The quantities of process water are being managed only by spray evaporation. Because of the ongoing stacked drainage and seepage, the facility is slowly, this is a graph of the volume of process water over time, this is roughly a five-year period, and you can see that the water, the inventory of water, process water at the site is slowly and steadily increasing. These top lines here are two representations of the storage capacity at the site. So this is the remaining volume of storage, of drainage and rainwater that can be handled for process water at the site. Today, the inventory is approximately 630 million gallons, which is a mixture of process water, rainfall, and seawater that was contained on-site to minimize in the off-site discharges during the leakage event in the NGS South reservoir at the site, as part of the dredging Can you hear me still on this?
Now we can.
Okay, I'll bring it closer. Thank you. Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. That's very helpful. So again, very important to understand that the different pieces of the site have, have different needs. In terms of the process water, about 150 million gallons of storage remains below the design levels of those reservoirs, the two that are used to store process water and in the lined process water sump. So that means that today, the site can handle an equivalent of 46 inches of rainfall. So that's still a significant quantity, and of course, over time, there's evaporation that happens, and so this is a measure of how much storage capacity it has at this moment. It continues to accumulate. That slant you saw to the graph on the, on the process water inventory equates to about 11 million gallons per year is, is our number. HRK continues to operate. This is a photograph of the spray nozzles that are inside that NGS North reservoir at the site. Again, this is process water management. HRK is obligated, they are the owners of the site, and it is, the Department has to hold HRK accountable for their obligations at the site. One of those obligations is to manage and safely treat or remove or consume that process water. Prior to the dredging operation for Berth 12, HRK was being able to treat and discharge to the local POTW about 150,000 gallons per day. That was May of 2011. Today, my understanding, that's currently not an option because of seawater contains a lot of chlorides, and the seawater is, is not acceptable for discharge to the POTW. So that option that was being done and where HRK had time to slowly and steadily remove water from that site, that was the plan, is not able to be done because of the introduction of seawater into the process water at the Piney Point Site. Spray evaporation is effective. That system continues to be operated since 2005, but it simply does not remove enough water to provide for the long-term closure of those remaining reservoirs that contain process water. That essentially is the crux of our issue. It is that simple. So options are needed. HRK every year has to provide an update to the Department on their water management plans, and clearly, what they have shown here in this analysis is that eventually, this is a, is a little bit of a statistical model that HRK provided in their last water management plan, and it, and it shows us what we all know, that indeed, if nothing is done, over time, those reservoirs will fill up. So again, leadership is so critical to us working together and engaging and protecting water resources, and I am grateful for this discussion today. Impatient with everybody for my rather long set of slides. So there are a couple of items I think are worth noting. The Department funded a study by Arcatis, which is a state contractor to us. They were able to go in and objectively provide an evaluation of a number of options. There are no rocket science options that they could evaluate, but they looked at three surface water discharge options, including additional ways of doing lime treatment at the site or reverse osmosis. They looked at sort of the existing spray evaporation system, provided a, an objective analysis of the effectiveness of that system, and then the effectiveness of providing enhanced spray evaporation capability at the site. They looked at the UIC option that Commissioner Bowe had, Commissioner Bowe had mentioned, and they, they looked at a resumption of a POTW discharge. They went through, and that report identifies pros and cons and assumptions that are inherent in each of these different options. And they gave Arcatis's opinion. They gave an opinion on the cost, and all of these different things range from $7 to $15 per, per thousand gallons. From the Department's contracting the work, certainly, these options can be as expensive as, as, as $20 per thousand gallon. So whatever it is, it takes funding to be able to safely and effectively manage and consume or remove process water from this site. They did, in the Arcatis study, they did go through and evaluate alternatives. Spray evaporation and enhanced spray evaporation system ranked through their, their process of evaluation, ranked out as the top potential option to pursue. Spray evaporation with the potential for resumed discharge, the POTW was ranked second. UIC was ranked in here by Arcatis as third. Reverse osmosis, which is, you know, generates a very clean, permeate, a very clean effluent for discharge, is often something that people think about for this industry and for treating, safely treating water, but it does have a, an issue in that the process provides a reject stream, a saltwater reject stream, and that has to be managed and disposed, and ultimately, it's not very useful as you try to remove sort of the last drops of process water at a facility like this. HRK also funded a pilot study to evaluate a surface water treatment option. They evaluated, again, the, the water that's in the NGS South, which contains seawater mixed with process water, and the NGS North are different just because of the history and how water has had to be managed at the site. So even though those both compartments contain process water, Inclear was able to do some pilot work at the site over several months and some modeling, some, some chemistry modeling, and they were able to evaluate the ability to be, to treat and have a surface water discharge for water at Piney Point. Want to put these numbers in perspective, in the, in the report that they provided to HRK and to the Department, the estimated costs here are just the chemical costs. What's not included here are capital costs for setting up equipment, power, labor, and other things beyond the chemical costs. But the, at least the chemical costs, you know, appear to be favorable. However, the other costs could also be significant, and we don't know. So this was, was, was an effective, you know, effort by HRK to provide for at least one option of an additional surface water treatment and discharge. It is notable that in that process, one of the things when you do double lime treatment, the ammonia nitrogen is removed by raising the pH and stripping and removing that ammonia by stripping it to the atmosphere. One of the options that was evaluated in this pilot study was innovative, in that it would use an electrolysis cell to be able to oxidize the ammonia to nitrogen gas. So you would not have the, the ammonia release that happens in conventional double lime treatment. So there's an awful lot to consider, and I wanted to share that there's a lot of changes that have happened over time, and indeed, whatever options are needed to be considered for process water management at the site, there's probably a lot to talk about and a lot to engage on. So again, I mentioned, you know, the Department's, of course, our mission is to protect water resources. In that role, HRK is the owner of the site, and they have to be held accountable, and they are being accountable. They are continuing to perform long-term care operations at the site. That includes environmental monitoring for surface water and groundwater at the site. They manage all the stormwater off the closed areas at the site. They have pumps that they have to manage and maintain. They manage and maintain the drains around the site, the lined areas at the site, including those that today still continue to contain process water and the areas that contain the dredge materials. This picture here, I think, is, is for folks who have not been to the site. Here, I'm standing on the OGS compartment, this is on top of the old GIP stack, and I'm looking across what is a small today cap area, which was not part of the reservoir for the, for the OGS compartment. To give you the scale, and this is Port Manatee in the background. You can break down the current requirements at the site into two buckets, I think. Long-term care, including process water management, and financial assurance that's necessary to make sure that somebody will be able to fund and take care of the site over the next 30, 40, 50 years. And this area, which is the OGS cap area, which contains dredge materials, the management and decanning where HRK works, there's agreements with Port Manatee to make sure that this essentially seawater is safe and decanted back as rainwater falls here and would fill up these compartments as well. So again, this is a closed area. It is significant in size, contains about 1.2, I think, million cubic yards is the number of dredge materials from the Berth 12 construction, and this water is decanted back periodically to Manatee Harbor through the pipes that lead under US 41 to, to Port Manatee. Ultimately, HRK has an obligation to cap this area so that it will be like the other portions of the site, it will map just fresh rainwater hits those areas and is able to drain off, and the port and HRK would no longer have to manage a seawater decant operation for these areas. To that end, when Commissioner Bowe mentioned that there was a proposal that HRK has approached the Department and are in preliminary discussions about using material that they would bring into the site to essentially fill up the remaining volume of those compartments so that a cap, an engineered cap, can be installed on top of those areas, and so that, once that's done, the areas will shed clean rainwater runoff into the local discharges, so clean stormwater off the OGS compartments. So cap these areas on top of the dredge materials so that clean stormwater can be managed through the local stormwater system at this site. Essentially, what they're proposing is a beneficial use project for structural fill materials. The materials that they're talking about are, in Florida statutes, fossil fuel combustion byproducts. In federal speak, they are coal combustion residuals. These materials essentially are, under the regulatory scheme, looked at as a, as a viable beneficial use material when, when used in an appropriate location. Their goal is to complete, HRK has proposed to the Department as a goal to complete the capping of the Berth 12 dredge materials, and again, to be able to manage stormwater off of that area. So the material itself is a mixture of fly ash and bottom ash and limestone, essentially, that is, that has gone through from an AES facility in Puerto Rico. The material and the proposal have to be evaluated. They are just at this point, preliminary discussions. What is most important is that any plans before the Department could What is most important is that any plans before the department could approve any plans, that they be environmentally sound, that HRK be proposing something that is environmentally responsible, and that indeed would be suitable material to be placed on top of the dredge materials to complete a capping so that a storm water can be managed off of that site. There are a number of considerations that have to be focused on to make sure that this project, if it's initiated, would be done in a way that protects water resources. Clearly, they'd have to be testing and an evaluation of the materials that would come in. There is a need to manage the logistics, and the department would have to understand all of the logistics of how this material would be managed at the site, including the unloading through the facilities at Port Manatee, the use of a temporary staging area so that when a ship is unloaded over a period of two or three days, the material can be safely brought across, placed at the site in an area where storm water is managed, and then over a longer two to three week period, the materials would be brought up into the cap areas for the OGS compartments, compacted and placed, so that ultimately an engineered cap could be installed on top. Clearly, like anything with these kind of endeavors, you know, the department would require extensive monitoring, including groundwater monitoring. If something like this can be considered, the department would require that there be financial assurance provided, so that when that material stops coming to those compartments, and they are full, so they can be capped, so that there are secured funds in what we anticipate would be an escrow account that HRK is already using to provide for financial assurance, that those funds would be available to ensure that those caps are completed. I think that's an essential, and very practical, and it fits well with the way the department engages in this industry and making sure that financial assurances are available. We would want to make sure that indeed the job was done, and done safely in a way that protects water resources. In addition, the site, I had mentioned that their obligations are the long-term care of the site itself. While we don't know how much it may be, it is important that if this project is done, that HRK continue to meet its obligation to provide additional financial assurances. That means cash in an escrow account that's protected to provide for the long-term water management at the site. So, complete the capping and secure additional funds, and so any authorization from the department, I believe at this point would contain requirements to be able to ensure that the capping project were completed, and to ensure that the project itself secured additional funding that is protected in an account that is, has to be used for the long-term care and water management at the site. So I appreciate greatly everybody's patience, I appreciate the kind reminders from folks in the audience to hold the mic closer. You know, it is just an objective fact that both Port Manatee and this site have a long The closure work that was completed through January of 2011 was successfully done, again, you know, it is not trivial that two and a half billion gallons of process water were effectively removed from the site. The conundrum is that there remain today areas that still manage, ponded areas that are on liner, that still manage process water, and the inventory is growing, so there is a need for process water management options, and a need to engage on those. There is certainly a need for HRK to complete a capping of the OGS compartments, again, and these are separate issues. The beneficial use project that we're beginning to discuss is one that will be hard work. It is one that the department, to even begin to evaluate it, is insisting that we have engineering, an engineered cap for the area, so that we can make sure that we have sufficient information, just like we would for any project that anybody would propose, to ensure that the plans are environmentally sound, environmentally responsible, will be protective of water resources, and indeed will get the job done, which in this case is to meet HRK's obligation, to place a cap and no longer have to manage seawater from those compartments. All of that is because the department plays, we have to make sure that HRK is the current owner of the site, as a private entity that owns and operates that site, is held accountable for their obligations. And I want to ensure I appreciate the opportunity to engage and look forward to continuing discussions, and while we don't have a decision yet on the proposed beneficial use project, we certainly think it's important that we consider it objectively, and look at it in light of our regulations to protect water resources. While it may generate funds that can be used to provide for a process water solution, this proposal is not about the long-term process water management challenge at the site. So I hope, again, appreciate everybody's patience, I hope that some of the history and tying together the work and the way the closure infrastructure was done at the site has been helpful, and I appreciate the time to go through the slides, and Mr. Chairman, you know, however you would like to proceed if there's questions. Want to thank Mr. Higgins here in the back, who was kind enough to make sure that the format and the presentation, everything would work well, and we can go back to any slide that may be helpful. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I think a lot of the commissioners here have questions, I don't know if you want to take a minute and get a sip of water, you've been...
I will grab some coffee.
You've been rolling for about 55 minutes now, so...
Yeah.
But, so let's start with Commissioner Whitmore.
Mr. Coats, thank you. I came on the board at the very end of 2006, so I remember when the port had worked with them regarding the dredging for Berth 12, and thank you for the history, and it was very helpful. Once you cap these, and I'm thinking of like the landfill, do you have to have piping to expel gases? I know you do in methane and landfills, do you have to also with this, if it's capped?
So the, a cap area typically will have to have some sort of venting to make sure that there's not gas pressure that will provide uplift. In this case, what they would do when they provide the cap, there's not the generations or decomposition process like you have at a municipal solid waste landfill. In this particular case, ultimately, there would be maybe some gas vents installed, but the, any kind of impermeable barrier that's installed on top of the materials on the OGS compartments would be ballasted by a protective soil cover, and so there'd be at least an 18 to 24 inch layer of soil that would weight and ballast so that you don't have an uplift of gases building. And there would still need to be a venting, but in this case, the dredge materials, including the materials that HRK is preliminarily talking with the department of bringing to the site, would not, they are inert materials, and they would not go through a decomposition process, would not generate, for example, methane gas, and so it would be, you know, not the same process as a solid waste landfill.
Do you, I got like five questions to ask, do you think, what kind of gas would it be, do you know, or what kind of gases?
So there would be no real, there's no decomposition, so there is no gas production.
It's just a vent.
It's simply a matter of, it'd be no different, and you're going to be essentially encapsulated.
Okay.
And so we will look to what the engineer for HRK proposes, but we would want to ensure that just that the ballasting of the soil keeps that liner in place. Of course, the primary function of putting a soil cover over the liner is to protect it from mechanical damage, somebody hitting it with a shovel or something like that in the future.
What is an enhanced spray evaporation?
So the term here, as I was using, it really just means additional spray evaporation.
Explain what that is.
So...
I assume you're spraying something and it evaporates, but I mean, what are you spraying?
So the, this picture here is probably a good reference for the discussion. So in this case, the pumps are bringing the process water up to a manifold system which sitting, which sits in the NGS North compartment, and it is process water only that is sprayed, and essentially it's simply an effort to allow the water to have more surface area contact with the solar, you know, radiation, heat, and to be able to increase the evaporation rate.
Okay.
And so it is just allowing, increasing or enhancing the evaporation that would naturally occur in any pond, in the water system. And what Arcatis had evaluated was a couple of different technologies, the pricing did come from evaluation of a couple of different technologies. This is one approach that has been in operation since 2005, pretty much continuously, and has continued to work. It is fairly low maintenance, but it is also a lot of effort to get out here and replace spray nozzles when they get broken and things like that. So this is one technology, there are other pieces of equipment that are literally sort of like a cannon, and they pump and spray the water out into the atmosphere so that it can evaporate.
Thank you. One of the options was the fly ash and the fluidized bed coal combustion, which is limestone. Is that what HRK was proposing to cover, and what were they going to cover? Because, and anybody that wants to know, that gray stuff out there is fly ash, right? When you first, when you drive out.
Right. Fly ash is imported into the state of Florida, and a number of port facilities in the state currently handle and safely manage fly ash that is used in the cement industry in the state. So that material, in some sense, what HRK is proposing is very similar, it contains fly ash and bottom ash, and so what they would be proposing, and it has the calcium oxide that is limestone that is used in their fluidized bed, so it is essentially a solid material that would be capped on top of the dredge materials that are in this, are currently in this compartment, and let's see if I have a, maybe this is the best slide here, again, this is March 2008, so this shows the dredge materials that are above the current water level at that time in March of 2018, but there are solids throughout these lined reservoirs that are from the dredging materials, and they would be placing that mixture of materials on top of this lined area, so it would have a liner under the bottom. If approved by the department, certainly our considerations at a minimum would require an engineered cap and a permeable layer on top and a protective soil cover on top of that to make sure that this area can generate clean storm water runoff.
So it's just for the dredge materials, when we did the dredge at Berth 12, it's not...
Correct.
Oh, okay, great.
It would only be for this area.
Got it, that's good. Also, HRK is in charge of closure. Who is, I mean, I know, I remember when Jeff came, I remember, but that's a big financial risk. Is the state helping them financially? I mean, I know, I've heard that the DEP is overseeing this, and they, you know, this is a DEP issue, not Manatee County, I mean, of course, it's in our county, we have, you know, we're very interested, or you wouldn't be here. But this is a big financial burden, and let's say they go bankrupt, like Mulberry did, who owns it, as Ed Hunsaker would say? You?
So the department does not, of course, have an ownership interest in the site, nor does Manatee County. HRK is the property owner after they acquired the site from the bankrupt estate, you know, in August of 2006. The department, our regulations provide for securing funds, and HRK, through agreements and orders with the department, has continued to put additional funds into what I would simply call a financial assurance mechanism. What it means in principle, the main mechanism going forward, and today it is in existence, is an escrow account, if you will, an escrow set of funds that are with our State Division of Financial Services, and those funds are cash, and so they would, if HRK were no longer at the site tomorrow, the department, through our regulations, has the ability to access those funds, to pay for ongoing, you have to pay for the power bill to run the pumps at the site, to be able to provide for the environmental monitoring, surface water and discharges at the site, for the storm water, for the groundwater monitoring, so all those things that are important for the safety of the site, the department would have access to those funds. Those funds are not sufficient today to be able to complete and treat or remove the remaining process water that's stored in the NGS North where the spray evaporation systems are operating, the NGS South and the water that drains from the drains around the stack into this lined process water sum. Essentially, that process, that water ends up stored in these two compartments.
They bought this from a state bankruptcy?
They bought that from the bankrupt estate.
Oh, is...
So the Mulberry Corporation had a bankruptcy trustee that was appointed, and through the bankruptcy process, of which I'm not the right person to give the details, but essentially, HRK acquired the site directly from the bankrupt Mulberry Corporation estate. The courts approved that acquisition, and then HRK and the department entered into agreement to govern our, both entities were now at the site, we had contractors at the site, but they acquired this site from the Mulberry Corporation effectively.
And the state got involved.
And so the state stepped in because, as we go back to those pictures, for example, the one there in January of 2003 with the ongoing storm water events, and when Mulberry left and essentially abandoned the site, it was continuing to fill up with process water, and if the state had not stepped in to try to protect and to protect water resources, the site would have overflowed.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming and doing this.
Yeah, thank you very much, Commissioner.
Commissioner Bellamy? Do you have anything? Priscilla?
Yes, thank you. The fly ash fascinates me. If we do the fly ash, if y'all decide to do the fly ash, there'll be no water in an injection well whatsoever, correct?
Correct. So the proposal that HRK has come to the department with is just limited to the desire to complete the capping of the OGS compartments, using, beneficially using that materials, and fortunately, both Florida statutes and federal regulations provide important criteria for what should be considered for a beneficial use project of this nature.
And how many tons of material will they need to fill that, and how long of a project are we talking? I mean, it's a big hole.
Right, and so I certainly don't have all the final details, but what I understand are two parts. The quantity of materials that HRK has preliminary discussed are in the range of 700,000 to 750,000 tons of material would be needed to bring essentially this material to the elevation of the existing dikes. And that material could be something that is handled over potentially a two to three year window. So it is, so it is a fairly, you know, it is something that would take several years, I think, to effectively complete.
I would think so. So just in my mind, HRK is going to be paid to take the fly ash, the port will be paid to have the fly ash come through, it'll go across the street, they will take some of those proceeds from the money that they make to do all of this, plus put some in escrow that no one can touch except for the site, if they did go bankruptcy, to finish cleaning the water, so in 2060, 65, the water's clean, we can dispense with everything and we're all go away happy?
We'll be...
Commissioner, I couldn't have said it better. Thank you.
We won't be around to enjoy it, yeah.
That would certainly be, you know...
But that's sort of the plan.
That is, that is, that is, in a word, the plan. The plan is to first make sure it's a sound, environmentally responsible project, that's the first consideration. But if the project is done, we want to make sure that we require HRK use this project, complete this obligation, and to secure funds, not just for the long-term, you know, needs for the site, but also to make sure as part of the project itself that that cap is completed on top of the compartment.
And we will, for all the double lining, it's already lined. Throw the fly, we put the fly ash in there over two, maybe three years, throw a little dirt on it. Of course, we have to have the rim ditches to continue with the seepage, and over time, they will, that water will clean itself just through filtration of the soil and everything. And can we, what kind of stuff would we put on top of it, something like solar? I mean, you're up there closer to the sun.
There are a lot, there's a lot of interest, TCO and a lot of the power companies, of course, are very interested in solar power projects. There is, I think, some discussion about whether or not solar power could be used as an option on top of here. It would have to be considered to make sure that the installation of the solar panels was considered in the design of that cap, to make sure the cap stayed effective. But certainly, anything, it's a fairly large footprint, you know, this is 70 acres, if I remember correctly, this is on the order of 50 to 60 acres, and so it's a large footprint that could be put into some use like that, and we would have to make sure, if HRK were to propose that, we would have to make sure that the integrity of this compartment, you know, the underlying closed stack system plus the capping of the dredge materials, that that would not be in any way adversely impacted if they did propose to do a solar project.
I would actually think fly ash and dirt would be less weight, though, than water. Water's very heavy. Isn't it? I mean...
It is, certainly, certainly, they're both, both heavy.
No, there wouldn't be water when they finish in there. It would all go down the sides, you have a big mountain, on where they put the fly ash. All right, that's worth looking at, and I'm always for that, as long as everybody kind of here knows, I'm not into any of that well stuff, that bothers me.
Commissioner Trice, thank you.
Commissioner Benak?
I got a minute, I'm a little bit confused, so sorry, you'll have to bear with me.
No problem.
So currently, we have a large stack of process water that has been capped... So currently, we have a large stack of process water that has been capped with a liner. And the problem is, as I understand it, is on top of that liner was placed dredge material from the berth 12 dredging. That created some leaks that had to be corrected. And we, I remember those days. I remember being a bit panicked about what was happening to water quality in Bishop Harbor. I was not an elected official at the time, but I'm a kayaker and have kayaked that area many times. I remember being very concerned about what would happen to the water quality. So I've always kind of looked at that decision since the issue here has always been, we have a big stack of processed material. Treating that and getting rid of the water seemed to be the issue. We're never going to get rid of all of that water, correct? I mean, this, I heard what Commissioner said, we're not getting rid of all of that water. We're just talking about capping it, correctly?
So there, if I could, so I do want to clarify, Commissioner Benak, thank you very much for your, for your very thoughtful questions. I do want to clarify that the dredging operation itself did not cause the leak in this NGS South reservoir. The dredge materials were pumped. I believe the dredge was operating at 40 or so thousand gallons per minute as dredge is due. And the materials were placed into the compartments here. Those compartments were modified to be able to safely receive that high velocity dredge discharge. The solids are primarily settled here, and there is a structure that was installed in this vicinity that allowed the water to clarify and settle so that you would have clean seawater being picked up from floating decant structures here. So essentially, dump the solids here, use this large reservoir to be able to hold the seawater, allow it to settle, and then use that as a decant process to produce clean seawater back for as part of the dredging operation. Unfortunately, this vicinity here, a leak formed, and it was a substantial leak on the order of 12,000 gallons per minute, formed in that compartment. And it was the environmental monitoring at the site that did the initial early detection that something was not working correctly. And I believe it was the diligence in both the port and HRK that prevented this from becoming a worse concern. And we absolutely share and appreciate and respect the concern for Bishop Harbor and doing everything possible to protect the water resources of the state. The material that is inside the stack system, maybe it's best to think of it as three things. There's process water in the lined ponds on top. There is dredging material in these two lined compartments that's just dredging material, seawater and rainwater, no process water. Underneath, so in that three-dimensional world, underneath these compartments, there remains poor water, which is process water that is, had previously saturated that entire stack, that is slowly draining out over time. Those very important seepage collection drains that are installed around this stack are collecting a combination of groundwater and process water that's seeping out of that stack. So that is a very long-term circumstance. That stack will continue to drain for, you know, decades to come. And so this lined area here will continue to receive additional process water over time. Eventually, this will reach an equilibrium state. I don't know that I'll be around to talk about it, but, but it will reach an equilibrium state. The goal in closing, responsibly closing these facilities, is to make them so that they're low maintenance and so that the ongoing, once this area is completely capped, rainwater is, on top is no longer a concern, and just make sure that the long-term stack seepage that drains out of this area is safely managed. And so there will be a continuing generation, but a lower quantity, you know, of process water that'll seep out. That's a slow process over time. The remaining process water that was here initially and now is being stored in both these compartments, you know, is the bulk of today's challenge. And the goal would be for HRK to come up with viable options, to engage with the community, to engage with the commissioners and the public on what are responsible ways to remove that water from the site that don't threaten groundwater or surface water resources of the state.
Okay. Thank you for that. Because, so the, so the issue is basically, and I, you know, you've had years, we've had incredible amount of rainwater, being very, very concerned about it, you know, and with the changes that we have, parent changes in the amount of storms that we're having and rain events. I mean, that seems to be, that is the issue that we're dealing with. We're not going to be able to, I mean, this, you're still going to have these stacks of material, but dealing with, making sure that the rainwater does not destroy the viability of the stacks is the issue. Is that correct?
That's correct. Particularly focused on, these areas are large, about, I think, I may be incorrect, about 33 or 35 acres here, about 70 acres here. And since they contain process water, so high in nutrients, rainwater that hits those areas, you know, you still have to manage all the water that falls in these compartments as process water. And so they have to be managed separately. And so as long as these contain process water, rainfall on them just adds to the process water inventory. And you are so correct, Commissioner Benak, that, and we tried to sort of convey it with a couple of those historical storms. They, they are the, the long-term normal rainfall is something that, you know, the site can handle for the next many years. The potential of having a storm event that brings a lot of rain in a very short duration of time remains a threat to any of these facilities. And it is something that today's discussion is really appreciated because today we have the luxury of being proactive. And it is good to talk about this, continue this focus now before too many of those big storms come.
Okay. Well, I just, you know, lessons learned, you know, history's a great thing, that you can look back and see what had happened. And I, it is, you know, looking back, and I've said this, you know, the decision to put dredge materials into one of those stacks had some pretty significant impacts for the port. It cost us a huge amount of money to deal with that issue. So making this decision, I can't do it lightly. I can't, you know, and the science is so important, the engineering. I know you're an engineer, love engineers, worked with them my entire career. But I just want to have some assurances, and I'm not sure how we get there.
I, you know, as a personal note, if you'll forgive me for a bit of humor, I have to defend the science in me as well. I'm originally a biology and chemistry sort of, sort of person, and then found my way into engineering as well. And so it perhaps provides a confusing perspective to view the world through, both an engineer and a scientist. Whatever happens from today going forward, it's important to engage with everyone about the options, engage with everyone about the regulatory requirements, and whatever is done, whatever HRK does at this site, to make sure that we believe we have learned from those past lessons. Make sure that we believe that whatever they might endeavor to do, though it'd be hard work, be done in a way that protects the water resources of the state. That's mission one.
Misty?
I have a question. So the area that we're focused on is about 100, 150 acres? Is that right?
Commissioner, I apologize. I was, I was having technical difficulty making sure I had the mic. And you mentioned 150 acres. Could you?
The, the area that we're talking about with the ponds and the stacks and the capping, we have an overall site of about 750 acres. Is that right? But the area that we're focused on here is how big?
So the number, the historical footprint of the site, as I recall, and this may not be, this is from, this is, for me even, this is becoming historical memory and the inability. I think the site was about 670 acres, and, yeah, so about 670 acres historically in the footprint of the former Piney Point, the old Borden Chemical site. Today, the site is smaller. For example, about 33 acres has been carved out. This is the Air Products facility that you see along US 41. And there are other pieces of ownership within here where other companies have set up operations. There today, the site is, you know, something less, you know, I don't have the exact number of the footprint for the site today. For the capping operation, this is approximately a 50 or so acre footprint in these areas here. Again, this one, I'm a little bit more familiar with the acreage. This reservoir was about 70 acres in size for comparison. So for the OGS capping proposal that HRK is continuing to work with their engineer on, and would work with the department, you know, in its proposal, is this footprint. The larger site, you know, still contains this 10 acre sump, this area here and this area here are the primary areas of the site that are of interest because they are the ones that are exposing process water to rainfall.
So, so the balance of the land owned by HRK, is it encumbered until this is resolved? Or is it available for development?
It, I believe, is available for development. There are a number of what I would call protective encumbrances that the department and the bankruptcy trustee had recorded. So there are pollution easements across the site to guarantee the department continued access as needed to, if there's, you know, a need for additional work at the site, we want to make sure that the state has access to this, to this area. So there's a number of protective items that were recorded in the, in the Manatee County records. The site is available for development. And indeed, I think it's important to note that, that HRK, following the 2011 dredging project, has continued to remain on site, has continued to manage the long-term care of this facility. They have continued to use sales of portions of the site for safe and effective redevelopment, which support jobs. And today, the site, I believe, supports about 170 full-time positions in addition to additional contractors and commerce. So for example, when berth 12 was initially opened, it was, it was safely completed, the dredging project, you know, Port Manatee did safely complete the dredging project. And one of the first ships that came through that new berth 12 facility brings fertilizer in through the Mayo operation, which is in this vicinity here of the site. The Mayo is a fertilizer, you know, storage and distribution facility that is currently on that site. And so the site, pieces of the site have been successfully redeveloped to support jobs and the economy. And of course, all of those activities are subject to department oversight and local regulations. So Manatee County as well, the department endeavor to make sure that anything that happens on this footprint continues to be done in a safe and environmentally sound manner.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Ball?
I really appreciate DEP, you coming so fast, so quickly, to give us a presentation. I do have a lot of questions. And I guess part of that is because I've been there on the tour and had major discussion with the representative from HRK. So bear with me, please. But I think this is the environment to do it. Because I, I think some of our questions are still out there that haven't been answered. I'll just start from the beginning. Does the county, Manatee County government, have any say about what is decided by HRK and DEP to do with the, with the water, the processed water?
So I think that's a very important question, Commissioner Ball, and I appreciate that. And I want to talk first, just in terms of what we're doing today. I think that Manatee County, both the local government leadership here that you all represent, as well as the people of Manatee, absolutely have a say, an important say in anything that's done in the county. I think it's absolutely critical that the department and HRK and everybody engage and receive input and allow that, just as, just as we're talking about today. So I certainly think that's appropriate. When the department reviews and makes a decision, of course, that the process that we do is an open, transparent process. And anybody can stand up and provide input, can object to, if we were to make a decision to do something, provide input and, and of course, you know, participate, I guess, in that decision-making process. So, so anything that we do is subject to the, to normal, routine administrative procedures as an agency of the state. And so, so everybody has important input. I would hope that there would be, going forward, a shared vision and discussion so that you have a lot of very important local expertise in your natural resources group. I would, I would hope that we can all engage and talk about what are options that are out there for HRK. It is ultimately HRK's obligation today as a private entity and the owner of the remainder of the site. And so both through continued commitment from the department to engagement, absolutely, you know, there's both a need and an opportunity for input.
Well, the reason I ask that is because in the meeting that I had with Representative Robinson and a couple of staff members from County, Manatee County, we were told explicitly that HRK was already working with DEP, trying to get a permit for a deep water injection well. And I haven't really heard much on that issue. So I don't, I want to make sure that we are receiving the information we need. I mean, your presentation was great, and I realize that HRK is in a very difficult position, but you know the county didn't put them there. So I, I want to work with HRK. I think we all, would all want to do that. But I think we need to truly know exactly what is going on with the processed water. And I, I'll just go right back to that, the process water, for a second. And, you know, then I have other questions. Is it fair to say right now that there's about 650 million gallons of processed water? Is that fair to say?
So let me, work with that number. So the, the number that we have that was in my presentation is about 630 million gallons. So I think essentially you are correct. So about 630 million gallons, and it's a mixture of process, remnant process water from the former phosphate operations at the site.
Right.
Seawater and rainfall. Those are the three components of that 630 million gallons. Seawater, the majority of process water, and ongoing rainfall at the site. So the discussion on options for the site is always a very interesting one. So HRK does not have any submittal to the department for a UIC well, does not have any submittal for any resumption of a surface water discharge of treated water from the site. So for example, the current authorization that HRK operates, the stormwater discharges from the site, do not allow HRK to resume a treatment and discharge operation of process water. They can manage and make sure that they have clean stormwater coming off the closed areas of the site. They have to make sure it's the same authorization that does not allow them to decant seawater at the site. That's why it has to go back through the pipeline to the, to the port facility. So whether it be a resumed treatment and discharge to surface waters of the state or a underground injection control well, all of that would have to go through a formal permitting process.
Has there been discussion with HRK and DEP about a class one well?
HRK has, has, has talked to the department about a UIC well, talked to the department about the, you know, possibilities for surface water treatment and discharges. And it's my belief that HRK wants to come up with whatever options are suitable, and the department would insist they be environmentally sound and protect water resources for managing and removing the remainder of that process water. The last time the department had before it a UIC well application, it was the county's application. And we absolutely respect the will of the county who withdrew that application, I think, in 2015. And we respect that and we appreciate that. And so what we want to do today is to, is to address, you know, each of HRK's obligations at the site in an appropriate manner.
Well, another reason I'm asking that question, and thank you for your input, is because we were told that basically, an, an application had been done and that what they wanted to do, what HRK wanted to do, was to put in this deep injection well, and then they would also have other companies come in and put their hazardous, I don't know if hazardous is the right word, process water, whatever, in the well and use it to, as an income for them. And so obviously, that is a huge concern for this commissioner at least, that, you know, we would be looking at having a class one well right here that, you know, an independent company has, and they're letting other companies come in and discharge in that well. I, I would think the county government, and you talk about the quality of our water, that's a concern for this commissioner. So at this point, that's not an option, you've said. They would have to go through a formal process. And would DEP, at that point, notify the county, county government, that this is taking place?
So it would have to be, Commissioner, you know, Ball, you're absolutely correct. So it would have to be a formal permitting process. And one, you have a commitment from the department that we would, one, engage with you and let you know if we receive an application for, for anything at the site of that nature, whether it be surface water, UIC, or anything else at the site. We would certainly want you all to know that. And also, of course, you would have the opportunity. And, and also, of course, you, you would have the opportunity for public input, you know, into that process. And so, you know, there, there certainly, I think, has been throughout the 2004 timeframe where I've been involved with the site, there have been numerous proposals about different opportunities and ways that people might tackle the processed water, you know, at this site. And I, I think that, that in an objective fashion, the Department has to listen, talk about what our requirements are, ask the appropriate questions to ensure that, that people are considering the water resources of the state. And also, you know, do what we can, you know, things get busy. But we have to all remain committed to continuing dialogue on what the options are at the state. It is a critical environmental priority, protect water resources of the state of Florida. And we know that is your mission as well, is to make sure that anything done here is appropriately considered.
Mr. Chairman, if you would just bear with me, I've just got a lot of questions. The 650 million gallons that we're looking at today, because of the rainwater and so forth that you're talking about, it's going to increase over time, is it not? Because it's, it takes so long, from what I was told by HRK, when you're trying to, you know, clean the water, basically as we're doing, or they have been doing, it takes a lo- it's a very long, long process. So it's not a process that, at this point, that can lower the amount of water, is that correct?
The staff can't hear in the back, they're saying, if Carlos, if you have a handheld or something. Not, they can hear you, they can't hear him.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So they're all going like this to me, so I'm passing it on, sorry.
Okay.
I've been standing up there a long time, sorry.
Yep. So I, I think this graph is, is, you know, from the presentation, is, is, is the salient one here. So indeed, as, as you mentioned, the processed water inventory at the site is steadily accumulating. And, and if more is not done to remove water from the site, eventually the site will be full again. Right now, it can handle that, that number of about 46 inches of additional rainfall. That's about 150 million gallons of remaining storage beyond the 630 million gallons of inventory at the site.
Right, okay.
And, and so, so it is important, these kind of proactive discussions are timely and important because something does have to be, something more does have to happen at the site.
And you're talking about the liners. And, and, you know, if you could help me with the liners, that situation. I'm, I, I've heard two different things. I've heard from HRK that the liners are not going to deteriorate, but then I've heard from county staff that they will deteriorate. What is the deal as far as DEP is concerned on these liners?
So the liners, for example, that are in the processed water storage compartments are critically important. You know, it is important to make sure that they don't have any leaks. And so we require inspections of the liners. And today, for example, if HRK finds a liner that's been damaged, they will hire a contractor to come out there and repair the liner. And the funds that are used to do that come from their current financial assurances for long-term care. So if it's a $6,000 bill to repair a piece of liner out there, those funds are from the financial assurances that HRK currently has on deposit to pay for that. So the, the long-term view is that the compartments themselves, the processed water does need to be removed so that these areas don't continue to accumulate. The liners protect and, and don't allow this water to seep into the stack, but you have to, those liners require diligence, oversight by the Department and, and making sure that something doesn't damage the liners over time. And make sure that if, if there is any problems, they're maintained. And ultimately, the goal would be to remove the processed water so that it is no longer a concern.
And then you mentioned the port several times about how, you know, our dredging had gone over to HRK. That being said, it is an agreement that was entered into by HRK in the port for, I mean, HRK agreed that they wanted to take our dredging. And I assume, and I've not seen the agreement, I have asked for it this morning, as a matter of fact, and I know I'm going to get it today. And I will make sure that all commissioners receive that. I'm going to assume that the port pays to put the dredging at HRK. Do we know that? And maybe that's not a question to ask you. I, I apologize if it's, if it's not.
Right. First I'll check, I think that's probably much better-
Oh, that's good.
Everybody?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And so I, you know, I'm, of course, aware of the agreement between the port and HRK, but I am not, you know, privileged to understand that, you know, the status of the payments and the relationship there between, the business relationship between the port and HRK.
And I'm sorry, I, Carlos was just telling me that it, the port paid about $2 million to HRK. So I got to tell you, I, my heart goes out to HRK because it, it's a mess and it, and it's a very difficult situation for them to be in. So I think ideally, the county and, and HRK, we should, we should certainly have a lot of conversation because there is a problem. The water's got to be removed, that processed water. That's my next question. I know there are sites, and I believe Florida, that would take processed water. Can you tell us where some of those sites might be?
So, you know, there continues to be an operational industry in the state. There are facilities from Plant City down through Bartow and, and into Polk County that currently manage and, and produce processed water. So I don't know, you know, if any of those, some of the industrial use in the past, in that graph I showed, that showed the pie chart of the 2.35 billion gallons, some of the historical processed water from the site was moved from the facility and trucked and transported to other industrial facilities, you know, in, in this region.
And I would assume that that's probably more of an expensive process to, than a deep water injection well might be. Is that correct? Is that fair to say?
It, it is, you know, it, all these options, I think, are expensive.
Yeah.
And it becomes a matter of which one's a little bit more expensive. And, and any trucking operation also has to be done with due diligence, making sure the loading facilities are safe, making sure the transportation process is safe, making sure the unloading facilities and the receiving facility itself has the capacity to safely store, manage, and consume that processed water. So, so it is like all these decisions, it is something that you have to both, you know, certainly HRK has to look at the economics of it. The Department has to remain focused on, on water resource protections.
Okay. And a question about where the dredging has been put from the port. There is water in there as well. So, and I'm, I'm familiar with the fly ash and the bottom ash, I understand all that, that would be shipped into the port and then taken across the street to HRK. And, and I hope that that is a solution that would be helpful. But that being said, doesn't the water that's in there need to come out before it's capped? Or are you telling me that this fly ash and bottom ash will just go over top of the water? And I do know when it mixes and maybe, this is, I hope I understand correctly, from what I've been told, that the fly ash, when it gets wet, it becomes like concrete. Is that accurate?
The material itself does compact and consolidate and become dense. It, it will solidify. So that, that, that is true. And that's one of the reasons why it is, from our understanding, a suitable material to be a structural fill to support the overlying and permeable layer and the, the cap that would be engineered and constructed in this proposal. The water that is here, you're very correct, Commissioner Ball, to point out, the water that is here, the water that is here is seawater. In fact, from the aerial, you can sort of visibly see it's different. It is, it is a mixture of rainwater and seawater, and it would need to be removed. Currently, you know, that process is done periodically where HRK and the port make sure collectively that that seawater is in good shape to be brought back through, through the pipe that runs under US 41.
So go back to harbor.
Yeah, back to the harbor.
Yeah.
And so that is seawater and rainwater that would go back to the harbor. And just from a practical standpoint, to be able to safely and effectively place the materials up here and use heavy equipment to compact it in place and get the grading right so that the stormwater cap that is built over top will have drainage, you know, they will need to remove the seawater and rainwater that's here just so that they can get the equipment in there and work around safely.
Okay. And just to make sure that I understand, I, I mean, that's what I thought, but I wasn't 100%. But the other two ponds are the ones that really have the processed water in them. That is the major problem that we are trying to get educated on.
Yes, Commissioner Ball, you're correct. So these two compartments are the ones that contain processed water today and this 10 acre sump that, that receives the stack drainage.
Okay. And one more question. I did receive, and I, I think I mentioned this to you last night when you and I had a conversation, I did receive an email from a company last week, and I've not responded because I knew that, you know, we had this scheduled today. But there is a process that a company, and I won't mention any names at this point, but that is interested in trying to work something out. And I, as I believe, I think DEP is aware of this and it might be an alternative. And it's, it's a lot less expensive. Now this process, and, and I know you know what I'm referring to because we discussed it last night, this process, is it a faster process, do you know, than what we've seen in the past? Is it a viable option, I guess, is what I'm asking?
So I think in terms of, just speak in terms of the technology, the pilot study, I think, and, and the report is one that certainly the Department has, and we've provided it to key individuals, and we can provide it, you know, again, to anybody else. But the pilot study that was done, it was paid for by HRK. HRK did use their long-term care financial funds to provide for that pilot study. So the Department had a role in that. And first, we had to believe that it was a good use of the money that they have. And certainly evaluating the ability to treat processed water at the site was, was an important, you know, piece of information. So, so we did allow HRK to use those funds for that purpose. And the report, I think, showed that the technology is successful. The report is, is, the one that I'm thinking of is the one that I highlighted in my presentation where I mentioned that the, the cost estimates, as I understand them, in my review of the report, are right now focused on the chemical costs.
Right.
The materials, the proprietary technology that would be used to effectively treat the processed water. There would have to be additional evaluations of the engineering and capital costs to build a facility of a certain size, the, the cost to, of labor and to operate that and power. So there's a lot more that would need to be done for fairly evaluating any proposal. But we're encouraged by, you know, people looking at any options that might safely and effectively remove that processed water from the site.
All right. I really do appreciate you being here. And I can tell you that my heart does go out to HRK and to Jeff. I mean, what a job. Better you than me, I got to tell you. And I, I do hope that, you know, I mean, I realize this is not a county responsibility, nor do we want it to be. But obviously, we do have concerns, at least this commissioner does about, and I think it's fair to say we all do, about what the end result is. But we also realize that it needs to get done. And so we're hoping that, or at least I'm hoping, that DEP will move forward and try and find a solution and get this taken care of so we don't have this in our county anymore. You know, the quality of our water is of most importance and it's scary. It's very scary. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to provide some information. Sincerely hope, hope it has been helpful. And, you know, the Department absolutely remains committed, like you all are, you know, at focusing and protecting our water resources. And look forward to continuing, you know, dialogue.
Good. Let me, I just have a couple of quick questions. You know, I think, maybe kind of summarizing it up, what, the reason, basically, that I think we're here today is because of the capacity in those ponds is increasing at an increasing rate, if you will. And so it's becoming more time-critical due to maybe global warming, whatever. We seem to see more harsh storms come through Florida. So you say we've got, what, 48 inches of leeway there? You know, a couple of good storms, you know, could create an issue there. And apparently, the process that HRK is using now is not sufficient enough to, to drive that water level down at a fast enough rate. And so therein lies the risk that the, that those, those ponds breach at some point when they get to be an over-capacity standpoint. At least that's the way I unders- understand what our, that's why time is of the essence at this point, to try to see what other solutions are out there. And my second question is, I'm, you know, you know, I, I appreciate you being an engineer and a biologist and, but have, where, has this been done somewhere else before? I mean, do we, is there some experience out there somewhere else in the country, the world? And, you know, and has it been successful? Or is, are we going to be the, you know, the test market for, for this type of thing, is what I'm curious about?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that's a very, so, so looking to experience elsewhere, Florida has the lion's share, certainly, of phosphate production in the state. And the, the processed water that is created from the production of phosphate fertilizer materials is, is very unique. And certainly, there, there, there are overseas operations as well, but the lion's share of the technology and the research is here in the state of Florida. The, the regulations that the state of Florida has, I'm, I'm very proud of. I, I certainly helped write a few of those more recently, but I certainly wasn't the, the brainchild behind those regulations. And they are used nationally within the US by EPA and the Department of Justice as, as a model for how to oversee this, this industry. And the technologies that are being developed to try and, and treat processed water, there are, there are a lot of companies out there who are working hard to come up with a, with a cost-effective and viable option. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm encouraged by the progress that I, that I think is being made out there. And, and most of that work, I think, is focused here in Florida. Whether it be, you know, innovative systems to, you know, facilitate reverse osmosis treatment systems, other ways of treating and removing nutrients. Nutrients, of course, are a vital concern to the state. And the phosphate industry, you know, these, these waters contain high levels of nitrogen and phosphorus. And there are a lot of good-minded scientists and engineers that are working diligently to effectively treat and remove nitrogen and phosphorus from a variety of wastewater streams. And so the tools are out there. Funding is, is one challenge, just like the technology is a challenge, funding is a challenge. Being able to provide the public and, and, and everybody with, with information to fairly evaluate the, the options are also, you know, that, that is a logistical challenge, but an important one that we meet. And it is, time is of the essence, as you said. It is one that today, the facility continues to be safely managed. We don't have a crisis today. We're very grateful for that. But we also appreciate, and this is something I hope I've been able to convey, is a sincere belief that this discussion is timely. Because we want to be able to have time to talk through the issues, get input, and have those responsible entities for the site make sound decisions, pursue appropriate permitting, make sure that it's done in a timely fashion where it's not an emergency. And we need time for that. And so today, we have time. And you're, you're correct that, you know, that the chance for, you know, additional storms, additional rainfall is something we want to guard against. And so, you know, moving forward sooner than later, it's prudent. And, you know, all of that, all that will help us all protect our water resources.
And again, I mean, I know, you know, I mean, you know, I just personally, you know, something like this is, is really big for the county. And, you know, and I am sure for you and certainly for HRK, you know, but I'm, always concerned to me to be a beta site, you know, for something of this size. You know, so I always would like to know that somebody else out there has, has done it successfully and we're not the guinea pig, if you will. But I appreciate, you know, your honesty and your forthright comments today. Carol?
I, I'll let you take a sip of coffee. And if I, if you want to, we have staff here that could probably answer this question for me. I think we have three deep well injections, Mark, I'm not sure, in Manatee County. If somebody could come up and state where they are and if anybody is aware of any private business or company that has one that we, that we don't own. I know we have one in Cortez, which always shocked me. Buffalo, maybe?
How is that relevant?
Jeff Goodman, De-Direct Utilities. Mr. Chair, Commissioners? Yep, we've got, on the wastewater side, we have a, a Class 1 deep well on Cortez, a few miles from our Southwest Water Reclamation Facility. We have a Class 5 recharge well on the campus there at our Southwest Facility. We also have a Class 5 at our North Treatment Plant and in a Class 1 at our North Treatment Plant. Those are currently under testing and construction, but are scheduled to go online sometime later this year. I'm aware of one in, in the, in the city associated with Tropicana. And it, it deals with their processed wastewater. I couldn't really speak to many of the details there.
So we have one private industry that you know of?
That I know of, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Coats, I just wanted to, I mean, listening to everything today, to me, it looks like we leave it, which is not an option, like the Chair said, because of, you know, the way the weather is now, the storms, the hurricanes, that's probably not an option that, and that's why I'm glad you guys are talking and trying to figure this out, truck it or deep well. it or deep-well. So, you know, I, I, when I met with staff, like, in August, September regarding all this, our staff was concerned because of, of their comments were, one big rainfall event, we're in trouble. And that's probably why we're all here today. But I know you're talking about it. I can't understand why our HRK would have wanted to buy this years ago with this major financial responsibility. I, you've done good things on it with Air Products and businesses like this, but, you know, and I just can't imagine what happened with Mulberry when it, when it closed because of the financial responsibility and they went under. So this is a problem that I hope that we just keep dialoguing about and, and maybe start putting some action to it. I agree with what the comments made, the dredge material, the fly ash, you know, this is nothing to do with the county, but it seems like logic. But our most important issues are the ones that are, are retaining the water. So the other information was great, but our priority is the other two. And just, I think you got today that please keep the county informed, keep our county staff, we were asking the county staff to keep us informed on what's going on, and maybe I should ask, I don't know who to ask, at the county, if HRK or somebody decided to apply for a permit for a deep-well, whether we, does the county commission has, have any authority to approve it or deny it? And I guess I'd ask our attorneys. You'd have to come up, I don't know, I mean, I know it's between DEP and a private business, but I'm just gonna ask that because it was brought up.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. For the record, Bill Clegg with the County Attorney's Office. We have a pine on this before. That is within the exclusive jurisdiction of DEP, whether or not to approve a permit for a deep-injection well. Our recourse would be to file an objection if we thought that we should, and we would be governed by their process under the Florida Administrative Procedures Act, just like any other challenger to a permit. Quite honestly, given the very unique and difficult nature of Piney Point, the courts are likely to extend a lot of deference to the department in how they handle this problem. So the Board should look at this more as a working relationship between the department and the county and a dialogue, because they have been pretty good to us in recent years in hearing what we have to say and coming to talk to us. When this first started years ago, there were some differences of opinion between the county staff and attorneys and DEP's staff and attorneys about the long-term risks associated with this site. But I don't get that sense and haven't for a long time. So I think you should view it as a dialogue where you're, you're trying to communicate with each other and come to some consensus, and I hope you would agree with that.
I do.
Okay, thank you. I just think, and I, I do agree, we all need to be working together. I'm gonna ask staff to keep the commissioners informed on what's going on, HRK and DEP, you know, I, I really do believe this isn't our issue, this is, you know, the HRK's and the state's, but we are totally involved. This is our harbor, this is our environment. So we need to all be talking. And, you know, in all the years I've been up here, I've never had this completed a presentation. I've got five pages of notes, thank you. And can we have a copy, can we get a copy of your presentation?
Absolutely.
Could somebody email it to us? It was wonderful. It's great historical information on this, so thank you. And thank you, Bill, 'cause that, that's good information, too. Thank you.
Okay. Betsy?
Yeah, I also appreciate the presentation. It's much better than last time we had a discussion on this. It was when we were talking about a deep-well, and it's just so confusing what everybody's objectives were. And I, I don't know what the business model of HRK is. But I do assume that if there is a, some sort of a strategy or some sort of, you know, I looked at that study. The first I knew about this whole issue was when I got a copy of the study that talked about the potential treatment. And it was very scientific. I tried to look at it and said, whoa, what are we talking about here? What is our role? What is going on here? Because, you know, treating processed water in the state of Florida has got to be, you know, if we can find a good way to do it, that's gotta be somewhat lucrative, I would think. If we could create a method to treat processed water, 'cause we're not alone in this issue of having this wastewater stream. I, I just wanna make sure that the capping that is being talked about, that we've talked about today, that, where it takes care of the one issue of having the buildup, the continual buildup of potentially of rainwater mixing with the seawater, and that water stream is very, very different, as you noted, than in the other ponds. We are not, this capping will not in any way solve that problem. Did I miss, is there a connection that the capping in any way will take care of the wastewater stream that is, still is processed water, mixed with rainwater, but not seawater, if I understand it correctly, in those other two ponds? Am I understanding that correctly?
Commissioner Manak, I believe, I believe so. Let me, let me try to rephrase. So I, I think that it is absolutely true that the preliminary discussions that HRK has had with the department on the, on the capping project, the beneficial-use capping project, that would not in any way impact the processed water inventories. It wouldn't involve treatment or any kind of removal itself of processed water for the purposes of long-term care. There is one important facet that, that we have shared with your environmental department that I think is critical. You know, they, they still have stormwater areas that they're gonna bring in and have to stage. For logistical purposes, they will have to offload the ship over a couple period of days. They will have to have a temporary storage area, you know, which will be located, most likely, if, if, if the plans go forward, the area that HRK has talked about is in this vicinity of the site, about three acres. And stormwater will have to be managed on that area, and they will manage that locally. In the event of rainfall, like with any project, to make sure water resources are protected, we would require that HRK have contingencies even for managing the stormwater, just like you do here for the fly ash that staged at the facilities, you would safely and effectively manage that stormwater. We would expect HRK to do the same for the materials being brought across the street. And indeed, we have, we have talked with HRK about if you had to take any of that stormwater runoff and had to put it somewhere, this is their storage capacity. So if there was stormwater, they would put it there, but obviously, none of us want to have a circumstance where the processed water inventory has another reason to grow at the site. And so we would require that HRK add some of that additional spray evaporation to the site to offset any potential contingency for stormwater from this capping operation being introduced into the processed water ponds. So, so there is, there is a very practical logistic, but none of that would involve any kind of a permitting of either a surface water discharge or a UIC well. This is strictly considerations about how to safely and effectively do this project and what might the department require based on the plans that HRK would propose.
Okay. I appreciate that, because that stormwater is obviously a big issue as well. So the issue of a, a deep-well, is that being utilized in any other treatment areas for this kind of processed water? Has there been any deep-well injection elsewhere in the state?
There is, in the state for processed water, not, not at this point in time. There is a, a, a deep-well that operates in the vicinity of Houston for phosphate industry processed water there. The, the, you know, focus in the state, there is, there is a lot of, of processed water management and treatment being done in the state, principally being done primarily through reverse osmosis. The most effective way to manage this water is to consume it in a fertilizer manufacturing plant. You know, that way, there's no environmental discharge, and the effort that was taken to, to, to mine and recover the phosphorus value gets put actually into the fertilizer instead of being discharged into, into our waters of the state. The, the, the challenge, of course, is, is both one of technology and, and cost and, and location. We were in, as you all have said, we're in a very important place here in the state of Florida, and, and the challenge would be to make sure that any of the discharges, if there was a treatment and discharge, for example, are, are done in a way that does not cause any water quality concerns.
Well, I definitely appreciate that, and that is the, the challenge that we have, and I hope we hear more about it. And certainly, the, you know, ability to have a deep-well, I mean, the adjacent property had talked about having a deep-well, the, whatever that plant is that you, was referenced, that's bringing in, you said, the first shipment.
The phosphate.
The, the new facility. And I, I'm not sure what they, you guys know what I'm talking about?
Chlorine.
Help me.
Chlorine.
Chlorine, is it a chlorine, I don't know what it is. Chemical?
Allied.
Allied chemical. I mean, they're the ones that have talked about having a deep-well, is what I had heard. Now, whether or not, again, and, and my understanding is, that permitting is solely done through DEP. We would have a notice, I, I would assume, just like anyone else has a notice of a permit, that DEP would publish, but we would have to have awareness and somebody following that at a staff level if we're gonna be involved in any, anything like that, so, right?
Right. And I may offer, there's one additional detail that at least I'm aware of from my time at the department. In, in the case of a UIC well, and it's the same process that we do for a surface water discharge permit, there's an additional step that isn't involved in all of our regulatory programs where, for a project like this, there would be a notice of a draft permit that would be ahead of the agency issuing an intended agency action. So the department would look at, evaluate whether or not the project was permissible, and based on that evaluation, would publish a notice of draft permit. And that is truly intended to give people an opportunity to look at a, a written document the department would have prepared in response to an application. And in that case, it would be only if, if we had felt that it was permissible under the laws and regulations to protect the resources of the state. And that notice of draft is done both for UIC permits as well as for Clean Water Act State Surface Water Waste, what, discharges under our wastewater permitting program. So that's an important piece of public input. And I absolutely agree with, with what Mr. Clegg was saying about, you know, the process and understand that, but I do think it is, it is essential that we continue an effective dialogue and we work together, because we all care about what happens here.
Has Allied Chemicals filed a permit, or would you be aware of that if they had?
I, I am not, you know, immediately aware of it, but to my knowledge, they have not filed, you know, any application for that. That facility would, would produce a, it's my understanding, that facility would produce a saltwater discharge. And in a, in a UIC discharge scenario, you know, with the, one of the challenges with the injection of, of wastewater is, if you have fresh water, like a domestic wastewater, that material is light compared to the formation waters it's pumped into. And a seawater or a, or a salty discharge into a UIC well at least doesn't have a buoyancy effect where it tries to float and rise up. And, but whatever the case is, whenever the department has to look at any permitting objective, you know, we have to make sure that water resources are protected. And I think the additional step of providing a notice of draft permit is, is a really good procedure for allowing for, for public input.
Thank you.
Vanessa?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Coats. I, out of curiosity, I did wanna ask staff a couple of questions on your comment. Can you come back up? Now, you're in Utilities, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is, wasn't it Utilities that came to us in 2014, I believe it was, or maybe it was 2013, that wanted to put in a, a Class 1 well, and we turned it down?
Hoping you had forgotten, but yes, ma'am.
No, I remember. Okay. And so, now, you've, you've not had conversation with me about these other wells, and I know you, you said there's a couple of Class 1s, one on Cortez?
For many years.
And where was the other one?
The one on Cortez has been there since the 80s.
Right. Okay.
The other ones that are North Water Reclamation Facility.
Okay, one of your facilities, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And tell me something, the one in Cortez, who, who owns that?
We do.
We do?
Yes, ma'am.
The county?
Correct.
Okay. So, just out of curiosity, I know that there has been some interest on perhaps getting another Class 1 in Utilities. Do you still have any interest in that? Is that something that might be coming forward to us?
We have a Class 1 in, under construction at North at the moment.
Right.
The message that we had relayed to the commission when we talked about the well at the port was that if we couldn't go there, we had to find a solution, and that we would go back within our fence site.
And the one that you say you have that's being done right now, I don't remember us approving that. When was that approved?
It was in our budget.
Is it a Class?
It was approved in, it was approved in our?
A Class 1?
There's a Class 5 and a Class 1.
Okay, but there's, okay, there's a big difference between those two, correct?
There is a difference, yes, ma'am.
That's what I thought. And can you explain a Class 5?
Yeah, Class 5 would be at a, a shallower level.
Nowhere near what a Class 1 is. The Class 1 is much deeper, is that correct?
The one at North is around 3,000 feet, below, below surface.
Okay. All right. Hmm, that's interesting. Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out, who owned these, because I'll tell you why. HRK told me when, and Representative Robinson, that the, Betsy, the company that you were asking about would be one of the companies that would be using the deep water injection on the Class 1 well if HRK built it. So I, I think that's something that perhaps this Board should think about, not that it, whatever, whatever y'all think. You know, if you have, the county's one thing, but allowing other companies to come in and use it and disperse their contaminated, whatever it is, water, et cetera, in this well is a whole different thing. I mean, that is something that would be open to the public, from what I gather. Is there any restrictions on that? To your knowledge, that when somebody, if a private industry has a deep-water injection well, they can just let anybody use it that they want? Is that fair, or is there restrictions?
I couldn't, I couldn't speak to that. I think Mr. Coats would probably have to speak to that.
Mr. Coats, can you answer that for me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So the, you know, if a, if a permit were issued to a private entity for, for UIC, it would apply to whatever, whatever materials they had, they had applied for. So in other words, if they had represented that they were going to receive and treat a certain class of, of wastewater, they would treat it and then dispose it in a UIC well. That permit, is my understanding, would be written and evaluated for the safety of doing that and the protection of water resources for a particular waste stream. And so that if, if an entity, a private entity wanted to go out and expand that process, they indeed would have to modify their wastewater and UIC permit for being able to do that, to make sure the UIC disposal mechanism was safely and effectively treating that and that it was still protective of water resources.
And I think that's irresponsible on our part, not to, you know, object to that. But anyway, that's, I'm just one commissioner. All right, thank you, Mr. Coats, I really appreciate it.
Sure, thank you.
And no other questions? I'd like to thank you, and we're, we're gonna now open it up to public comment, so that each, anybody from the public who'd like to come up and speak?
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I don't know where we're gonna put him. Oh, we got a microphone. You'll have three minutes?
I don't need three minutes, Mr. Johnson. First of all, let me applaud Commissioner Ball for assembling this today, and Mr. Coats for his nice response. I have two questions. One is, to you, Mrs. Ball, was your very first question?
We need your name.
Stu, huh? Yes, Dr. Richard Conard, been a member of this community since 1967. Was your very first question answered yes or no by Mr. Coats, when you said, does this county have any decision-making aspect concerning these wells? And I, I didn't hear whether it was yes or no.
It's pretty much a no.
What?
Okay, Mr. Coats, am I correct, it is a no?
Why then are we even assembling to discuss it? I would suggest that we need to immediately initiate litigation against them in order to stop this foolishness. Secondly, I have a question of Mr. Coats. If I understand your math, in the next 30 to 50 years, there's gonna be a need for anywhere from 1.48 to 6.3 billion dollars for all of this work to get done. Does HRK have that much in your trust fund to handle this?
So thank you for your, for your, for your comment and question. From the, the inventory of water that is on-site, the 630 million gallons of processed water, depending on the cost, it wouldn't be anywhere near the amount?
Well, he's answering.
So they don't have, I've already, as I said during the presentation, they do not have the funds to pay for what we would expect to be the costs currently for removing that processed water.
They just talked?
They, they have approximately $4 million in trust.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Conard. Is there anybody else in the public that would, Mr. Marshall? You have three minutes?
Ernest Sandy Marshall, First Vice President of the Federation of Manatee County Community Associations. I've lived in the county since 1951, so I remember when this was nothing but pasture land. I want to thank the Board for your efforts to bring this to the attention of yourselves as well as the community and your staff. And the gentleman here today, Mr. Coats, I thought, has done an excellent job of being able to outline the history. We couldn't hear very well, but we won't hold that against you. I hope you can hear me. The primary concern- The primary concerns that the public has, I have, I have eight grandkids and three children I'm raising in this community. I'm not going to be around here too much longer to worry about it like some of you. But I tell you this, the one thing we've got to be careful of is that this port here, which is an asset and a jewel, is not turned into a disaster that haunts this community because of not having adequate ability to dispose of that water up there in a way that is cost-efficient. The burden for that shouldn't be on the county, shouldn't be on our taxpayers. It should be on the people that want to utilize this location for a profit-making venture, which is great, but not at the expense of this public. Now, from what I'm hearing, I don't hear that there's enough money being proposed to be put into a trust fund of some kind that will be held in escrow that in case this corporation goes bankrupt, like the other two that have already used this site. We've got to be assured that the burden is not going to fall on the state taxpayers, the county taxpayers, and this Board to worry about it. It should be on the backs of the people that want to do this. And we're not trying to keep them from coming in here, but not at our expense. So it's incumbent that you make sure that there's enough money to cover it, and also to get rid of that water, because these storms are not getting smaller, they're coming in this area. And just like you say, it isn't a question of if, it's when. And we could end up with another Michael. I hope not for this area, but if it ever hit, you think about what you're going to have up there. So folks, hold their feet to the fire, please. Make sure they do what we want done to protect us here in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Anybody else in the public that would like to speak? Guess not. Carol, you have a comment?
Just real quick, we do have this on our legislative platform, Mr. Coats, and we are going to be going up to the state. And at least, my thought was, we were going to, our platform says that we are going to make sure that you have the funding to be able to do what you need to do. So we don't know how far we'll get, but we are, that is one of our top three priorities. And Senator Galvano, the Senate President, lives in Manatee County. So we are scheduled to meet with all our legislators and push to ask for more funding for this very reason.
Okay, thank you. Just took my speech away, so that makes it easier.
Oh, sorry.
But again, you know, we all are indebted few come down from Tallahassee, and I think we all are a lot more educated than we were this morning when we got here. And I hope, you know, education is good, I guess, right? Hear that somewhere, I guess. But again, thank you very much, and no other comments, this meeting is adjourned somehow.
Oh, did you want to mention?